各位
Good morning, members. We will start the Special Finance Committee for the session on Transport and Logistics. We welcome Secretary Mr. Lam Tsai-hong. I will invite Mr. Lam to deliver opening remarks. Mr. Lam, thank you, Chairman. To meet the transport and logistics demand arising from long-term development of Hong Kong, the current term government takes forward transport infrastructure projects through the infrastructure-led and capacity-creating planning approach to unleash the development potential of areas-long transport corridors, while at the same time presses ahead with the development of aviation and logistics in order to continuously consolidate and enhance Hong Kong's status as an international aviation center and logistics hub. We are taking forward various railway and road projects that are under planning or construction at full steam. On railways, the construction works of four local railway projects, including Tongchung Line Extension, Oyster Bay Station, Two Moon South Extension and Northern Link Kootong Station, will commence within this year and are expected to complete progressively from 2027. For cross-boundary infrastructures, the government will continue to pursue cross-boundary railway projects through the Task Force for Hong Kong-Shenzhen Cooperation on Cross-Boundary Railway Infrastructures, among others. The second-stage study on the Hong Kong-Shenzhen Western Raillink Hongshui Q to Tianhai, covering areas such as preliminary technical feasibility, alignment, et cetera, has commenced for target completion in mid-2024. We are also actively following up on the work relating to the Northern Link Spur Line, which connects to the new Huanggang Port in Shenzhen via Hong Kong Shenzhen Innovation and Technology Park in Lomahau Loop. On road infrastructures, Changquanno-Lianting Tunnel, which is the eastern section of Route Number Six, together with the Cross Bay Link Changquanno was commissioned in December 2022 to relieve the traffic pressure of the Changquanno District and Changquanno Tunnel. Constructing works of the remaining sections of the Route Number Six are also underway. Upon its full commissioning in 2026, the journey time between Changquanno Town Center and Yau Ma Te interchange is estimated to be reduced by over fifteen minutes. In addition, the government is taking forward a series of Northwest New Territories Road Infrastructure Projects, including Route Number Eleven, Tingyi-Lantau Link, Watting of Yunlong Highway and Two Moon Bypass, et cetera. These are expected to commission progressively in or before 2033 to cater for the traffic need arising from the future developments in the Northwest New Territories. Moreover, the public consultation on the three strategic railways and three major roads recommended in the strategic studies on railways and major roads beyond 2030 has been completed. We will carefully consider the public views and conduct preliminary technical assessment to refine the recommended projects and formulate a major transport infrastructure development blueprint for Hong Kong in Q4 this year. On public transportation, considering that the local economy is still recovering, the government has decided to extend the temporary special measures under the Public Transport Fair subsidy scheme for a period of six months till the end of October this year to provide commuters with a subsidy amounting to one-third of their actual monthly public transport expenses in excess of $200, subject to a monthly cap of $500. We estimate that the scheme will benefit some 3.5 million commuters per month during this period. The government has been actively promoting the development of electric taxis or e-taxis through various measures. To further promote the adoption of e-taxis, the Financial Secretary proposed in a 2023 to 24 budget to put in place a loan scheme with 100% guarantee for the taxi trade to encourage taxi owners to replace their taxis with battery e-taxis. Meanwhile, following the full resumption of normal travel between the mainland and Hong Kong starting from the 6th of February this year to support the expeditious business resumption of cross-boundary passenger transport trade. The budget also announced that a new scheme will be launched to offer fully guaranteed loans for eligible passenger transport operators for the purpose of vehicle or ferry repair and maintenance, buying insurance, et cetera. With a view to resuming services as soon as possible, we consulted the Legislative Council Panel on Transport in March this year. Under two loan schemes and members in general supported the schemes, we will seek funding approvals from the Legal Finance Committee within this month. The government completed the review of the MTR fare adjustment mechanism at the end of last month. The enhanced package links MTR fares directly with MTR Cooperation Limited's Hong Kong Property Development Profits to respond to the ongoing calls from the public. The various measures under the review package will lower the fare adjustment rate this year by 60% to 2.3%, significantly reducing the burden of fares on the public. On aviation, since Hong Kong's gradual removal of the inbound control measures and resumption of normal travel, passenger throughput at the Hong Kong International Airport has been steadily recovering, with Hong Kong International Airport retaining its position as the world's busiest cargo airport in 2022. High on the agenda this year is to support the sustained recovery of air traffic, apart from the fee waivers and concessions and measures for stimulating demand rolled out by the Airport Authority of Hong Kong, or AA. The government, in concert with the AA, is also studying the issue of manpower shortage in the aviation industry and identifying solutions. On airport development, to cater for the long-term air traffic demand and increase the passenger and cargo handling capacities of the Hong Kong IA, the AA is actively implementing the Three Runway System project as planned. The AA completed and commissioned the Third Runway in 2022 as scheduled and targets to complete the Three Runway System in 2024. In addition, the government will continue to support the AA in proactively taking forward other projects under the Airport City Vision. In particular, the works for Sky Pier Terminal were completed at the end of 2022. The AA is also planning to develop an aviation business park on the airport island to complement the development of the Aviation Industrial Park in Juhai, proposed to be developed jointly with the Juhai authorities. To establish Hong Kong as an aircraft leasing and services hub, the government has conducted a trade consultation on the proposed enhancement measures to the aircraft leasing preferential tax regime. We will introduce legislative amendments into the legal in Q4 this year. On maritime development, with Hong Kong's position as a prominent international maritime center, we have been committed to improving the industry's competitiveness. Measures include attracting more maritime enterprises to establish presence in Hong Kong through tax concessions, as well as promoting the development of a smart port with a view to enhancing the efficiency of Hong Kong's port and reducing its operation costs. We will proactively implement a host of new measures, as mentioned in the budget, to further promote the development of Hong Kong as an international maritime center. We will set up a task force in collaboration with the Hong Kong Maritime and Port Board and representatives of the high-end maritime services industry with the aim of putting forward an action plan by the end of this year. We will expedite studies and strategies for promoting the high-end maritime service industry and enhance exchanges among industries in the international arena and the GBA. The scale of the annual flagship event, Hong Kong Maritime Week, will also be expanded. Meanwhile, we will inject $200 million to the Maritime and Aviation Training Fund to enhance the existing training schemes relating to the aviation and maritime industries, as well as to strengthen demand power training and promotion of logistics industries. To further promote modern logistics development, so as to enhance the role of Hong Kong as an international logistics hub, we have started formulating an action plan on modern logistics development to accelerate the development of Hong Kong into a modern high-value-added smart logistics hub. We target to formulate the comprehensive modern logistic development strategies within this year. We are grateful to members for their concern. My team and I are pleased to answer questions from members. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lam. This is a very popular session. So far, twenty-two members have pressed the button. I will give each of you four minutes. I want to keep time strictly and allow all of you to speak. Otherwise, the last few members may not get a chance. So these are the members: Mr. Chan Shiu-hong, Chan Ho-foong, Michael Look, Dominic Lee, Adrian Ho, Kanif Lau, Edward Lau and Kanif Lau, Mrs. Nixie Lam, Mr. Biu Tang, Dr. Ngan Man Yu, Kison Young, Scott Leung, Dr. Chow Man Kong, Ben Chan, Lam Chan Cheung, Michael Tian, Mr. Yim Kong, Frankie Yig, Dr. Lo Wei Quak, Andrew Lam, Perry Yu, and Mr. Stephen Ho, the twenty-second member. First, Mr. Chan Shiu-hong. Thank you, Chairman. Now, I would like to follow up on my own question, that is, number forty-two, on the establishment of the Railway Office, the Railways Department. Now, according to the original plan, it should be, it should have been established in year 2022 to 23, yet it has not been established as of now. So according to the reply, taking into consideration of the development of the northern metropolis, the government is reviewing the establishment of the Railways Development, the Railways Department. Now, yesterday, I submitted a document to the, I mean, the government has submitted documents to the Subcommittee on Railway Development, and the government proposed to develop, to establish a Railway Office in relation to the infrastructure of the northern metropolis. So maybe that's the government's plan, to replace the Railways Department. So what about the other railways, other than those in the northern metropolis? Now, does the expenditure had within the estimates include the expenditure for the establishment of the Northern Metropolis Railways Office? Or would there be another proposal for that? I know it will be discussed on the Subcommittee. It matters relating to railway development. But my concern is, the reply is still saying that the Railways Department would be established in year 2022 to 23. So will that office comprise the regulatory branch of the EMSD and also the Railway Department and supervise the operation of railways? So what does the expenditure have cover? Secretary, thank you. The item in the budget does not include the positions or the posts to be created under the Northern Metropolis Railway Office and also the post under the Railways Department. We have to establish the office and the department first before we have the post. Now, all along, we want to establish the Railways Department. Still, the focus is on the expeditious development of the northern metropolis. And also, as mentioned in my opening, the Northern Rail Link Spur Line linking Tianhai to Hongshui Q is still at a preliminary design stage. And also, since it involves cross-boundary railway, the work would be much more complicated. That's why we propose to establish a Northern Metropolis Railway Office for that purpose. Now, for the Railways Department, we would listen to members' views. Depending on the progress of the Northern Metropolis Railway Development work and also the overall developments of railway in Hong Kong, we will consider any options. Now, the planning portfolio and the safety management portfolio under the EMSD would be consolidated under the Railways Department. There will be fifty-four posts created, four of which will be directorate posts. The others will be non-directorate professional supports. And twenty-eight would be posts from other grades. Thank you. Now, I know the time is tight. I will follow this question up after the meeting. There will be three hundred and seventeen posts. While compared with the original plan proposed in year 2021, there is a huge discrepancy. Mr. Lam, please supplement the information later. Thank you. Mr. Chan Ho-foong? Yes, thank you. Thirty-six and one-one-three, thirty-six. According to the reply, the western section of the South Island Line would be reconsidered after the redevelopment of the Wafu Estates in year thirty. Well, I don't think we should wait. The western section has many stations, not just the Wafu Estates Station. We should start the work now and then to make it available when the Wafu Estates Redevelopment Project has completed. Otherwise, after the project is completed, the residents will have to wait another ten years. So I hope the governments can speed up the construction projects for the western section of the Southern Island Line. Now, one-one-three, I think the shocking news over the past two days was the fare hike proposal, forty percent for ferries, plying between outlying islands and the Hong Kong Island, especially for those residents on Changzhou and Lema Island, they had no other choices. So it's a mechanism to cap the fare hike. Now, it seems that there is a culture for public transport service operators to make a huge ask and then let the governments bargain it down. So I think that should be a more steady rise every year rather than a huge hike in one go, which is shocking. Secretary, thank you. The South Island Line, the Wafu Estates, is one of our focuses as well. There will be a station there. Now, Mr. Chan mentioned whether we could start construction for other stations first. You must understand that in making plans for railways, we have to consider the line as a whole. We have to make comprehensive planning before we start construction for any stations along the line. But we've heard Mr. Chan Ho-foong's concern, we will make good use of time. We will try to advance the schedule because the line is a major lifeline in the southern district. Now, when we receive the fare increase proposal from the ferry service operators, we would be the gatekeepers. We would look at the operational situation of the companies, the financial situation, expenditure, and their fare box revenue. We will also estimate the fare box and non-fare box revenue before and after the proposed fare increase. There will be detailed study and assessments conducted by us. I promise you, we will be very diligent in our gatekeeping work. Of course, we'd also consider the affordability of the general public. That is also one of the key factors for our consideration. Now, for public transport services, different means of public transport service have varying historical background. It is very difficult to apply a one-size-fits-all mechanism for, say, ferry services and bus services, but we will be the gatekeeper for any fare increase proposal. Thank you. Mr. Michael Look, thank you. I'm also concerned about railways, like other members. So I would like to ride on the previous two members' questions. That is, number sixty, Mr. Kanif Lau, and six, number seventy-three, Dr. Lo Wei Quak, about the establishment of the Railways Department. The secretary told us the thinking of the government. Now, the highways departments and the EMSDs work branches concerning railway would be consolidated to support the development of infrastructure in northern metropolis. That's good. But how can we actually achieve enhancements in speed, quantity, and quality? There are no KPIs at all in the replies. Many people are asking, why do we have to have these railways departments with a lot of bull cracks? Well, now, Mr. Biu Tang is laughing because he is well aware of the promise made by the government when the when an estate in his constituents was promised by the government back in year 2021. Now, the railway will only be completed in year 2029. Well, if you have a kid, congratulations, the railway will be there when your kid gets married. So Mr. Chan Ho-foong mentioned about the redevelopment of Wafu Estates. Well, we should adopt, I thought we were adopting the infrastructure-led development philosophy. Now, there was a study in the mainland. In the mainland, in Shenzhen, it only takes five years, six years' time for designing and completing a railway. For Singapore, the time required is eleven years. In Hong Kong, well, we were lucky if we get it in two decades. So it's a KPI. Secretary, Ms. Look mentioned KPI. A team will be established to lead the infrastructure development projects in northern metropolis. We have submitted a proposal with some KPIs included. Now, concerning the Railways Department, the KPI.
What about government KPIs? Does the government have any new system, new method to enhance speed? So that compared with previous railways, how much time is saved? Well, for details, that is, for the details of KPI, I will defer to the Permanent Secretary. For each railway project, it is quite complicated because of the long alignment or the length. It has quite a large bearing. So for time, quantity, and quality, they may be a little bit different. I will invite the Permanent Secretary to talk about the KPI of Northern Metropolis. Thank you, Chairman. Thank you, Mr. Benson Look. We submitted to the Subcommittee on Railways. We included a series of indicators of KPIs, subject to the consent of the Legal. There are several important railway projects in the northern metropolis. They will be implemented at different time slots, including the Hong Kong-Shenzhen Western Raillink Hongshui Q to Tianhai. This will be completed by mid-2024. In 2025, we will also have new operational mode of railways. We will also have new procurement methods as well as new methods of implementation. And we will also take on board what Mr. Look has said just now, so that we can enhance speed and efficiency. From 2026 to 2030, for the spur line of the Northern Link, we will gazette the relevant projects. The Development Bureau and we have also streamlined some procedures in relation to gazette. We would like to move faster so that we can achieve some KPIs. Next, Mr. Dominic Lee.
Thank you, Chairman. I'd like to follow up on T L B one-four-eight on Hengyuan White Border Control Point traffic conditions. I asked this question in February, and I asked about bus routes B eight and B nine. Why did they not operate on weekends? You replied to me that you were still reviewing them. During Easter holidays, there was long queue for Route B eight. They line up for a couple of hours, in your reply, even for weekends. There were fourteen thousand seven hundred visitors. Why did you not consider having routes B eight and B nine even on weekends or during holidays? For Hengyuan White Border Control Point, I think that you made light of its popularity. There were only four hundred parking spaces, and there were only eight parking spaces for coaches. The trade is actually seeking assistance. So how can you enhance the capacity of the relevant location? Thank you, Chairman. Thank you, Mr. Lee. Indeed, Hengyuan White Border Control Point is close to our heart. Indeed, it is a very popular attraction because of the, well, because of the high accessibility by vehicles. Lomahau Border Control Point has works going on. There is reconstruction works. Therefore, more people opt for Hengyuan White Border Control Points. There are three bus routes, namely B seven, B eight, and B nine, all of which are very popular routes. Despite the timetable, during holidays and on weekends, they have been adding different bus trips. Member asked about whether routes B eight and B nine could be made available even on weekdays. Easter holidays are actually public holidays, and a lot of us have these holidays, just like last week. We could have, well, we actually enjoy the longer holiday just with a small number of leave. Bus companies are actually well aware of the situation, so for the Golden Week of the first of May, we will increase the number of bus trips. In view of the demand, we will also increase the number of trips in the long run. Like Mr. Dominic Lee suggested, we will see whether there is such a burgeoning demand in the border control point. It is a new border control point, so we will have to gauge the situation on parking spaces. Since the operator maintains the fees at a reasonable level, at present, the number of parking spaces can cope with the current demand. Therefore, the situation right now is still manageable. We are identifying location in the surrounding environment, just five minutes away. There are government-run car parks catering for the needs of public members going to these attractions. There are more tourist tours using Hengyuan White Border Control Point. The areas is rather small, but then we are working hard to identify locations. We will follow up on this. Thank you, Chairman. Next, Mr. Adrian Ho.
Thank you, Chairman. I'd like to follow up on T L B oh-five-two and one-three-five. Both are my questions. In Easter holiday, Hong Kong Juhai Macau Bridge was very popular. On the tenth of April, it recorded a record-high usage rate. Apart from the changes in the utilization rate of Hong Kong Juhai Macau Bridge, since Hong Kong has fully resumed travel with the mainland, there are a lot more people are flying for closed-area permits. So it takes a very long time to apply for these permits. I'd like to know about the backlog of the permits pending handling. How many of these applications are there? Does the administration have any plan to redeploy staff members to handle the applications? On T L B one-three-five, in the written reply, the number of illegally parked coaches was mentioned, and I hope that you will have more communication and collaboration as well as coordination with the police force, so that you will have a better grasp of the figures, which you then can supply to us. Illegally parked vehicles can easily cause obstruction on the roads, which will cause potential danger to road users on medium-to-long-term measures for the new coaches in non-franchise bus parking spaces. I'd like to know the number of these parking spaces. I'd like to ask the Transport Department, Mr. Law, well, Ms. Resign at Law, to take this question. Thank you, Chairman. On the usage rate of Hong Kong Juhai Macau Bridge, this is close to our heart. But then, when it comes to the closed-area permit, the Transport Department had been under great stress. Because of the full resumption of travel, the rate was quite fast.
There were many people who did not apply for the renewal of these permits. So in February and March, a lot of people flocked to the TD to apply for renewal. We are under great stress. We have some fifty colleagues, they work overtime. They even worked during holidays such as the weekends or even Easter holidays last week. At present, we still have a backlog of four thousand odd cases. At the peak in February, we received over eight hundred cases of this sort, and we could only handle three hundred cases. The situation is far from ideal. We admit to it. For what we have done, for permits that have expired for half a year, there are quite a lot of documents we need to verify. But then we will streamline the procedures. We have indeed streamlined these procedures, and we consider them to be renewal of permits. As I said, we have already increased the number of manpower, and we are working very hard to identify any room for further exemption in accordance with legislation. For the, uh, well, for the commissioner of Hong Kong Shenzhen vehicles going north, we will see whether there is any room for further enhancement. For the parking spaces for coaches, these are our concerns as well. We will explore with the police force. We understand that coaches have their need to park their vehicles, but then we will work with the trade to see how we can make enhancements. After all, they cannot just park their vehicles here and there. We will have a grasp of the number of new coaches in order to tie in with the situation. I do not have these figures with me right now. We might not have a very accurate analysis of the figures right now. Next, Mr. Lau Kwok-Feng.
Thank you, Chairman. I'd like to ask about sixty, sixty-two, sixty-three, which were about the construction of railways. I am more concerned about expenses as well as manpower. The government has been emphasizing infrastructure led. In the reply, a lot of the projects are demand-led. And there are some projects in the backlog. A lot of the projects could only be commissioned after a decade the earliest. The government will set up the Railway Committee in the Northern Metropolis, which is understandable. And I hope that the government will expedite the process, whether it be Ku Tong Development Area, Hongshui Q Ha Chun. There will be population intake first, then the commissioning of railways. For seventeen Technopol and uh, Long Marcho River Loop, it would not be available until twenty twenty-three to twenty-four. Through the Railways Department, review the timetable and the situation, so that we can achieve the infrastructure-led approach. Looking forward, we have issues with expenses and manpower. Has the government considered using different methods of T, uh, well, T P B? We have V O T as well as other methods. In the future, there are new routes. Apart from Route number eleven, there are also shot-in bypass and other routes. For example, has the government considered using trunk road plus property mode as well as different financing mode to carry out these large-scale projects? The construction industry has been mentioning the manpower crunch for large-scale railway projects and infrastructure projects. Professional engineers are also concerned about this. Will the government consider in large-scale infrastructure projects relax the requirement to import more manpower in order, in order to implement the infrastructure-led policy?
Secretary, thank you, Mr. Lau, for your questions about the infrastructure-led development philosophy. Earlier on, the Development Bureau has streamlined the development procedures for infrastructure projects. The Legislative Council has also helped. Now for trunk roads, routes and railways, we will try to dovetail the time of population intake. Say for example, highways or trunk roads. It would be invisible if there is simply no trunk road when population is moving in, because you need these roads to deliver daily necessities. Now for the Ku Dong North or the Ku Dong Station, it will commence construction by the end of this year and will be completed by year two thousand twenty-seven. It will be broadly aligned with the population intake time of the N D A in Ku Dong. Now, the population intake would be spread over many years instead of just one year. We will identify opportunities to compress the timetable further. Another question mentioned by Mr. Lau is whether there would be other construction or operation model like build, operation and transfer agreements like those used in railway projects or trunk roads plus property arrangements. That is the rail plus property model. So we will explore the feasibility of this with the M T R C and other constructors. We will be open-minded in considering the manner of project's delivery. We want to speed up the delivery of the projects and save cost. Next, Mr. Candy Lau. Thank you, Chair. I would like to follow up on my question, number fifteen-nine. Now, I am concerned about the estimates of cost for some railways. Now, it would take some three point five billion dollars for building Ku Dong Station for the spur line of the North Northern Link. It will be five fifty-eight to fifty uh, about five billion dollars. So that estimate was based on the statistics a few years ago. So does that still apply? In recent years, a number of railway projects will be, will start construction like the Tongchung Extension Line and Tunma Line, Hongshui Q Station, and these will be started over the next two years. So it seems that the government is pressing ahead with a few major railway construction projects at the same time. Well, there were past experience where the governments failed to adequately monitor the cost of the railway projects when there were many projects starting at once. So with the governments, keep the cost under control and avoid delay. Secretary, thank you. Now, the first question is about the estimate of construction cost for railways. At the planning stage, we would come up with an estimate of cost after Gassettle of the plan. And when we have come to a more mature stage of development, the M T L C would conduct another, a separate assessment exercise. Because the previous one was only a preliminary estimation. After Gassettle, we would have a more, have a clearer idea on the length of the railway and also other course. So the separate estimation from the M T L C would be more accurate. Now, after the M T L C has submitted the estimates, the highways department would consult third-party consultants and independent consultants to look at the estimates. And then we would talk with the M T L C concerning the departures from the original estimates. It is only when we have a consensus would we enter into an agreement and decide on the operation model. Say for example, when we have decided it would be a railway plus property approach, then we would have a clear idea of the cost. Now for any fluctuation in cost, that would be borne entirely by the M T L C. So that's how we usually arrive at the estimates. In terms of manpower, we agree with the member. With the sheer amount of development projects ahead, there is bound to be a shortage of manpower. So the Development Bureau is actively studying whether we need to import labor. Thank you. Ms. Nicky Lam, thank you. Question fifty-seven about the Maritime and Aviation Training Fund or M A T F. Now, I'm quite interested to see how many people, how many beneficiaries there are according to industries. Now, we only have a total number of the trainees under the M A T F, but I want to know the situation of individual sectors. Now, the succession problem and shortage of member for these two trades are very serious. I've been approached by the sector and they talk about their difficulties in a press conference yesterday. So they are eager to learn about the government's strategies to strengthen training of new blood for these two sectors. Now, in terms of activities and courses for attracting new blood into these two trades, are there any KPIs? Well, it seems that there are only two hundred and thirty-eight people enrolled in the course, so the number is quite shabby. So I think the government should work with the industry to let more people know about the prospects of the industries and encourage them to join. Secretary, thank you. Concerning the manpower situation of the maritime and aviation industry, I would invite the Permanent Secretary to give a response. Now, a few things first. After the resumption of normalcy, sorry, I want to listen to your views on the maritime and aviation industry separately. Okay, for the maritime industry, we have a fund that is called the M A T F. The fund would support training for manpower for both the maritime and aviation industry. Deputy Secretary, please, Ms. Lam. Thank you very much. Concerning the number of beneficiaries. Now, students, trainees or trade practitioners benefited under the scheme has reached six thousand. Now, the split between the two trades is sixty percent for the maritime industry and forty percent for the aviation industry. Now, how can we make the sectors more attractive to young blood? Well, we have apprenticeship scheme, which is a platform for maritime and aviation services operators to hire young people for summer apprenticeship. Such these would be given to the participants. We hope this can attract more young people to consider joining the trades. Now, under the M A T F, there are funding items for the trade to enhance the corporate's image and for publicity and promotion. Now, as, as at the end of February, some sixty-five thousand members of the public have participated in these promotional campaigns. Thank you. So you said there would be a plan, so when would the, when would be the plan be available by this year? Well, for those apprenticeship scheme, they are regular programs. Or you said plan, actually, they are already up and running, sorry. Next member, Mr. Bill Tang. Thank you, Chair. My own question, twenty and eighteen. I said twenty-first because that's my major focus, that is the crossing the hill line of the East Caloon Line. So that should, that would be an elevated trackless rapid transit system. Now, in year two thousand twenty-two July, the highways department has commissioned consultants to carry out a technical feasibility study. So that would cost two point eight million dollars over the two years. You said the study would be completed by the middle of this year. I have to say thank you. Because calculating, by some simple calculation, the decision was made by this term of the government since it has come to, come, come to office. So I thank this term of the government for your willingness to allocate resources to conduct this feasibility study on an infrastructure project for these grassroots people living on the mid-levels in East Caloon. Well, I wonder whether you have made reference to the mass transit system technologies from the mainland. The technology in the mainland is very mature and the cost is low and the quality of the product is very fine. So have you conducted any site visits? And few trips to learn the technologies from the mainland operators? Now, there are lots of advantages. They are electric trains, so they only need charging. They do not have, they do not need overhead cables. And also, the track dimension is very narrow. Now, the proposal to design of the government is a thirteen-meter-wide elevated track. Well, that is simply too wide. So maybe you can learn from the mainland manufacturers to make it more efficient and cheaper. Now, number eighteen, solar road lights. Now, it only costs one cost and a very weaker sum for installing solar road lights in all eighteen districts. So why don't you do it soon? Secretary, I would defer the question to Director of Highways, Mr. Jimmy Chan. Thank you. Now, we have proposed a, an elevated trackless rapid transit system for the East Caloon. Now, we are conducting a study to learn from different designs from over the world. And we have also looked at the latest trackless rapid transit system in the mainland. There are many advantages. For example, they are very efficient, cost-effective, and a very good design. Now, we have to see if these designs are applicable to the East Caloon geography, because it is a huli region. So we have to look at the technical requirements and also the duration of service after each charge. So like the secretary said. So like the secretary said, by the middle of this year, we will have the study findings ready for your review. And on solar road lights. Now for rural areas, if we want to erect streetlights, we have to lay underground cables. Now to expedite the progress, we propose to build solar road lights. Now that's only a short term measure. When there's insufficient sunlight, these solar road lights may not be able to work. So we are looking at other options, for example, temporary battery to store energy, thank you.
Next, Dr. An Man Yu, thank you, Chairman. I'd like to to ask about the charging facilities for e-vehicles. The government has been advocating chargeable electric vehicles for e-minibuses, however. There are quite a lot of models. But in the community, there are no charging facility facility for for these vehicles in the public transport interchange in Yumeng Square. I'd like to know the government's plan to implement charging facilities for e-minibuses. For e-public light buses, that is EPLB, we have just started. Right now, we have one to two EPLBs on pilot scheme. There are more e-taxis and there are even more e-buses in this connection for EPLBs we have just started. For supporting facilities, that is charging facilities, we are working to follow up on these measures. With more public light bus routes being tested, there will be accordingly more chargeable well more charging facilities. We will have to work with Environmental Protection Department. We will collaborate with the department concerned. Right now, we are using hybrid energy for public light buses. In Kun Tong district alone, there are twenty or so these vehicles. So they have to resort to other modes. So why couldn't the government take the lead in promoting e-public light buses? The Hong Kong Productivity Council went to study e-public light buses and there are only two e-public light buses running on a pilot scheme. Otherwise, it cannot be put to great use. It will at most be just an exhibit. We will continue to work in concert with the EPD to see how we can work faster in this connection. Next, Mr. Yang Wen Kit. I'd like to follow up on zero eight eight and nine oh. First on oh eight eight. For the Kai Tak area, we will use a hybrid mode, that is, public light buses and buses will run on the ground. We will adopt a multimodal primarily. There are one thousand five hundred light public housing as well as fifteen thousand other housing units. Can this multimodal design resolve our problem in relation to CBD two? In twenty twenty one, the government announced the adoption of multimodal mode. This will be adopted in, well, this is actually being adopted in Kai Tak. And it has come to fruition. It's been two years. In parallel, we will continue to review the situation to identify any new development of green system around the world. The advanced system in mainland China are being mentioned very often. We will continue to explore any room for enhancement of the multimodal design in order to enhance the sustainability of traffic in locality as well as efficiency. We will continue to explore these issues. So Secretary, do you mean that you do not rule out the use of hybrid energy of buses or mono rail system? To solve the problems in East Caloon. The hybrid mode is actually very environmentally friendly. It is cheap as well for one kilometer, it is some one hundred million dollars. It has great capabilities in terms of going uphill. So will we use the hybrid mode to replace the mono rail mode to dovetail with the development in East Caloon? Well, we have actually have already answered this question. We will make reference to any other green mode of operation around the world. And we will also identify any more room for improvement, be it the efficiency or the sustainability. Well, Chairman, I'd like to follow up on this matter. Review is a very different issue you can review today, you can, well, I mean, you can explore today, but you can also explore tomorrow. In Kai Tak, there has been a study which has been going on for seven or eight years. Do you have any new timeline? Only two million or so was expended on the feasibility study for crossing the hill line. So can you explore the mass transit technologies in order to solve the problem facing the development of CBD two? Secretary, the word explore is a verb. In the world, there are a lot of different systems, which system is the most suitable for Kai Tak? This is exactly the process of our exploration. Secretary, can you reply to me directly whether you will implement some feasibility studies such as East Caloon line? You will also explore different technologies around the world. With this, this will be much more pragmatic, while I have nothing to add. Next, Mr. Long Man Guang, thank you, Chairman. I'd like I'd like to follow up on ninety on express express rail link. We'd like to have an increase in the number of trips to bring convenience to citizens as well as reduce the cost. The GBA one hour living cycle is very important. By increasing the speed and lowering the cost, this not only facilitates travel between the mainland and Hong Kong. This can also give citizens more options. This way, we can solve issues of livelihood as well as um healthcare. This will give citizens more choices. But then in the replied in ninety only two sentences were expanded on exploration between authorities in mainland. Will there be any KPI, for example, within three months or six months? There will be a basic implementation framework to let citizens know that the government actually is interested in, very well in one hour circle in the GBA. The government can discuss with the relevant authorities in the mainland as well as MTRCL. Right now, they will have to go to the ticketing office. Can we have some machines to allow citizens to board faster and give them more choices? Do you have newer facilities which can a which can enable citizen to have easier and more convenient way of traveling? Right now, there is a security check after which in the mainland, we will have to line up again for the security check against our baggage. And this will lengthen the commuting time. For the holidays last week, a lot of time was actually expended on this area. It may not be under the purview of the T L B. But then can the administration put in place any measures to shorten the time for citizens to go back to the mainland? Thank you, member, for your concerns over XRL. Previously, in the Legislative Council, in the oral questioning, I have given you quite a lot of information. There are shorter lines, for example, those less than two hours. If there is an earlier train, can we incorporate flexibility in the arrangements of tickets? This is actually a very important scope of work. In this connection, the MTRCL has already set up a task force with mainland authorities. They will look into ticketing affairs. We have established a task force to look into it for security check measures. Is there any enhancement measures? The MTRCL has been in close liaison with mainland authorities. In Hong Kong, it's twenty six meters for us, but then in mainland, it is forty thousand kilometers or so. In contrast to twenty six kilometers for us. For the twenty six kilometers in Hong Kong, it is actually beyond the territory and we will continue to look into this. Next, Dr. Chow Man Kong. Secretary, I'd like to ask about ninety sixty five and one hundred and sixty one. It is very important whether we can put in place the one hour cycle, uh well, one hour circle. How can we do better in the XRL project? Financial stability is very important. It has been two years to three years since the commission of XRL. But then how can we reach break even? It is very important. The total expenses is some eighty six billion dollars or so. Dematerialization of XRL is actually something good and we need to work faster. We need to think how we can increase revenue in order to break even. Any advertisements? There are not, there are actually not a lot of advertisements in XRL stations for escalators upon leaving the XRL stations. There is actually a very large LED screen, but then there is only one character. There was the publicity campaign of Hello Hong Kong in less than one week or so. Then the empty, well, the railway character was once again on the screen. Can you follow up on this? It is very important for us to break even. For uh sixty five and one sixty one, they are about different tunnels. I am concerned about how we can improve the cost effectiveness and efficiency of different channels. From Sha Tin to the city area for old tunnels, they have already reached a saturation point for uh Eagle Nest Tunnel and Sha Tin Heights Tunnels. They are only zero point five meters tall. How can we better enhance the efficiency of these tunnels? Well, I mean, the utilization rate is only zero point five percent. This way, we can better improve the cost effectiveness of public funds. Two questions, Secretary.
Thank you, Mr. Dr. Chow for your questions. You're right, we have built the XRL station. We have a twenty six kilometer long session connected to the forty thousand kilometers long railway network in the main in the mainland. Now on how we can increase revenue from the XRL project, this is something that we and the MTLC are concerned about. Now, materialization is one way forward. And Dr. Chow mentioned light box revenue. Now before the epidemic, the XRL has suspended running since January two thousand twenty to the fifteenth of February this year. So concerning non-fairbox revenues, the MTLC is very concerned about how we can increase that. Say for example, the light boxes at the West Calon Station of the XRL, the MTLC is trying to get the best out of them. Now for tunnels, they are infrastructure projects with massive investment and the maintenance cost is much higher than other roads. So we want to adhere to the user's pay principle, that is, the users should bear part of our investment costs of the tunnels. Now concerning the congestion problems for the several tunnels. Now, on the second of August, there would be a new arrangement in place for the free half crossing tunnels. Now, once we have reviewed the situation after the implementation of the updated arrangements, we will apply similar arrangement for the tunnels in Sha Tin, thank you. Mr. Ben Chen, thank you, I have three questions, but I only want a brief reply for the five one one three and one one two. Now, first zero three five. Now local vehicles, especially goods vehicles and cross boundary coach buses, there are, there is a serious shortage of drivers. There is no examination quota places for Hong Kong drivers in the mainland. So what about the mutual recognition of driving licenses for both places? What is the progress? Now, some one hundred and four forty bus routes will apply for fare hike for ferries. Some ferry routes, the fare increase is proposed is pitched as a hundred percent. Or if that if that's the case, do you find that's reasonable? And will you reduce the fare increase? And what about ways to increase non-fairbox revenue? Question one one two, there is a chronic shortage of parking spaces for commercial vehicles. The industry has been asking for more parking spaces. However, looking at the figures over the past three years, only two hundred and forty new parking spaces were added for commercial vehicles. Now, in the private sector, there is a decrease of some four hundred commercial vehicle parking spaces. So in the end, we end up losing another four hundred and seventy seven parking spaces for commercial vehicles. So is there really no way to address this problem? That explains the serious problem of illegal parking and many drivers are being given fixed penalty notices. Secretary, thank you concerning driving. Secretary, thank you. Concerning driving licenses. Or drivers of private cars. There is a mutual recognition arrangements between Hong Kong mainland and the and Macau. For commercial vehicle drivers, however, we have to be more careful and more stringent in terms of the in terms of license approvals. Now about the fair increase for buses and ferries. Like I mentioned earlier on, we would be we will be very careful in gatekeeping. Now we would look at the financial sustainability. And also the utilization rates of bus companies and ferry operators. And we will also look at the affordability of the general public. These will be factors considered in granting or recommending a fair increase. Now on ferries. We are thinking about increasing non fair box revenues for ferry operators. Say for example, ferry peers. Besides serving as a peer, there can be value added services. Say for example, convenience stores. Or in the case of bus stops. That they can be used as pickup points for courier services. So we are looking into these options with ferry service operators. Discussion has been ongoing with them. Secretary, may I remind you, the clock has stopped and you have we are way past four minutes. Just one more word. There will be more revenue, non revenue, non fair boss revenues for the operators. Thank you. What about parking spaces for commercial vehicles? Three years ago, a survey was conducted by us. According to the survey, it was estimated that there would be a steady increase of commercial in the number of commercial vehicles over over the over three years' time. So that is the that was the findings of this survey. Chairman, no answer at all. The government is trying to add parking spaces for commercial vehicles. However, we end up losing four hundred and seventy seven parking spaces for commercial vehicles. So what should the drivers do? Keep paying fixed penalty notices for illegal parking? There is no solution at all. Can I can I hear an answer? Can I can I get an answer from highways or transports? Secretary, if you think you need time to supplement, please submit a written reply afterwards. I will do that after the meeting. Thank you. Mister Lam Chan Singh, thank you, Chair. I would like to follow up on eighty one, one one three and one eight four. So eighty three is a question from Mister Sunny Tang about the free runway system. The A A has conducted a manpower survey. So I wonder whether this uh this manpower survey is a regular exercise or an ad hoc exercise for determining the manpower situation over the next five or ten years. And we will take into accounts the cooperation model with the Zhuhai Airport. And also the commandments of service for the free runway system. Now, have you also taken into account technology like unmanned handling of luggages or automated people mover? I think you have to take in take into account all these in order to protect employment. And set a better policy for importation of labor. Now, one one three about fair hike. Now for city bus, some routes will have their fair increase by a double. So for those people who work in the airports, they would have to pay an extra one thousand dollars each month. Now, we I know we have the public transport fares of this scheme. You get some you get a few hundred dollars in rebate, but that would be very discouraging for workers in airport. So any incentive, any subsidy for them? Now, one eight four operation situation of public mini buses. So concerning the shortage of drivers. Now you suggested that the employment scheme for middle and O H people under the Labor's Department may be of help. That's fine, but there is no figure. Now for people who wants to work at a more advanced age, the labor sub the labor department would give them a subsidies. And it would also lower the labor cost for the operators. So if there can be a public minibus driver, public light bus drivers version of this middle age and old age employment scheme, it would be of great help and it won't cost a lot. Free questions, brief replies, please. Thank you very much. Concerning the manpower survey, the airport authority would conduct this exercise regularly. So one such survey has been conducted recently. The findings have taken into accounts the factor of technology. Say for example, the luggage trolleys. Now it has been automated. Or even the check in services at check in counters have been automated to a certain extent. So these factors have been accounted for in the manpower survey. Concerning the proposed fare increase for bus routes, we would be very careful in studying them. For longer routes. Or for routes flying between urban areas and the airports. We will encourage the employers to consider the burden on the workers. Now concerning the operation situation of public mini buses. The labor department scheme would cover public minibus drivers as well. Thank you. Mister Michael Tian, thank you, Chairman. I'm extremely disappointed the clock is up and running again. Now eighty two and one seven four. In year two thousand eighteen, M T R C concerning the scandal of the subpar rebar scandal. The M T L C has done a poor job. The contractors were not regulated. So I move a motion to reform the governance of M T L C. That is, a third party should be set up, independent of the highways department. And then the E M S D would look at other parts of the projects other than railways. Now in year two thousand twenty one February, the railways department was promised by the government. Now in after two years' time, you still you are still saying that you are reviewing the situation. However, you completed the reform of the bureaus in a month's time. I'm extremely dissatisfied. Now, the railways department caused we only cause I mean, the railway office under the Northern Metropolis will cost thirty million dollars. It is just one tenth the the funding from the railway branch. Now, in the Northern Metropolis, there will be many more railways and also the fourth cross boundary, the fourth cross harbor tunnel. Now, the workload is simply massive. Now, the West Kaling Station taught us a hard lesson. So why don't you create a new post pitch at Directorate Grade Six to lead the railways department? This would provide strong leadership for colleagues responsible for managing railways. Now, a D three grade director would not be sufficient for monitoring railway project progress. Now, if you are asking for the creation of more posts instead of the new department, I would reject it. Now, I respect Mister Jimmy Chan, the director of highways very much. He has done a good job. I'm not accusing him. Now, I definitely support introducing competition for railways in Hong Kong. But the premise should be independent operators. There shouldn't be a subsidized or subsidy mechanism for subsidizing fare ticket fares. Well, I think we should compare how railway companies in other places are doing compared with M T R C. Now, lastly, the city bus is asking for a fifty percent or even sixty percent fair increase for some bus routes. Where does the problem lie? The problem lies in that there is a fair adjustment mechanism for M T R C, which is packed with inflation. They can adjust this every year. If there is a similar mechanism for the bus companies, which is packed with inflation, we wouldn't have this headache at all. Now they have to explain to us why they want to increase the fare. There is an increase in labor cost and view and so on. So they cannot ask for a pay a fair increase per year. So that they are asking a big rise in ten um after ten years' time.
Secretary succinct reply. For railways department, I have already answered members' questions. Because for the railway in the Northern Metropolis is now at a crucial stage. So we want to have a team to handle the most pressing issue. We have not yet given up on the establishment of the railways department. It is just a matter of order. I also agree with Mister Michael Teen for Hongshui Q Tianhai. We agree that there is room for us to introduce a new operator. We are working towards this direction. For fair heights and buses. It is actually the same as in public transportation. We will have regard to the fiscal position of the companies. As well as affordability of citizens to gatekeep. Well, my question is it why cannot you devote the resources to buses and minibus when the M T R C L has the relevant resources? Well, Mister Michael Teen, time is up, but I will allow the secretary to answer this question. The operator of different modes of transportation varies from one to another in terms of history and its operation. So it is very difficult for us to apply the same situation to all companies. The secretary has already replied to the problem of fair heights for three times. Next, Mister Yim Kong. Thank you, Chairman. I'd like to ask about T L B thirty one. The administration said that there is a fair competition with other parts in the region. The situation is not optimistic. So it is difficult to predict the cargo throughput in twenty twenty three. The cargo throughput is actually a very important indicator for Hong Kong. As the international container or cargo center, it provides a good reference. There are actually relevant bodies right now that can liaise with the trade. So on cargo throughput estimates, well, for container throughput estimates, there is actually no hurdle in relation to communication. So will the government announce the container throughput in due course this year? Thank you, Mister Yim. In our in our reply, if we have to estimate the throughput of containers this year. It is actually a tall order for us. There are different reasons. First, the overall economic performance, how will it be in this year? External circumstances are actually less predictable. It is not easy to have a good grasp at this stage. Competition with other parts in the region. It's the same. It is difficult for us to have very meaningful estimates. If we have to plug an estimate right now, it will not serve its purpose. It will not be very meaningful. So I do not agree that we can have a very accurate estimate at this moment. For port and maritime sector, we will continue to work hard on these sectors. For high value added maritime industry and services. Over the past few years, we have been working on tax concessions to incentivize maritime companies to estab to establish presence in Hong Kong. For uh maritime law financing methods as well as arbitration. These are some of the methods by which we evaluate the development of ports in a place. So we are working on this. Secretary, it's actually very simple. M T R H I T plus the one in Tianyi, we have different peers. There are already estimates, so when added up together, then that will be the estimate for the container throughput of Hong Kong. You said that it will not be very meaningful for Hong Kong. But on the other hand, this is actually very important in my opinion. So how can you consolidate the international standing of Hong Kong? It will be all too late. It is very critical for you to have the relevant estimates in the middle of the year. Well, Secretary, I hope that you have taken Mister Yim's point. Next Deputy Chair, Mister Frankie Yek, T L B zero nine one. About the so-called back price service, the illegal car hire service. We have tens of thousands of illegal car hire services vehicles in Hong Kong. There were twenty six cases. But then the T D only detained thirty five vehicles. That is out of proportion. How can you deal with this situation? This not only drove away drove away the businesses from regular drivers. So in different industries, there is actually a lack of drivers. It is actually not that useful to stop a publicity, otherwise all the problems would have gone. For one eight two, which was asked by Ben Chen. There is a shortage of parking spaces for commercial vehicles C V. The situation is even worse right now. Now, every day, there are a lot of vehicles being ticketed. How can you assist C Vs? I hope that the administration will work harder on this front. Third, on T L B one eight five. About public light buses. There are nine hundred and nineteen seven red minibus. We have a surplus of a few hundred of red minibus in twenty twenty one to twenty two. There were eighteen buses going from red to green. There will be twenty one in twenty twenty three. It is actually eternally impossible to absorb the surplus. Is there any way for the government to move faster? The MTRCL has K route buses. It has already finished its historical mission. So can the K route buses, well, can the K routes be scrapped to provide more green minibus? Secretary, in a moment, I will invite the Permanent Secretary to give yours a response. For illegal car hire service, that is illegal carriage of passengers by motor vehicles for higher or reward. I have already communicated with members. In the long run, we will work on enhancing taxi services. You may remember last year, in the first half of last year, we came to the logical on how to make enhancements. This year, we will also devise methods which we will bring to the logical for deliberation for deliberation with members. For parking spaces for C Vs and public light buses, I will invite Miss Maybou Chan, Permanent Secretary. Thank you, Chairman, and thank you, Mister Frankie Yek. On commercial vehicles, the secretary also mentioned some reviews conducted in collaboration with the T D. There are two main fronts. First, it came to our attention that quite a lot of C V drivers are actually from the grassroots. They live in public housing estates. So we did quite some work on providing car parking spaces in the daytime or for visitors. We have been working very actively to vacate the car parking spaces for these drivers to park their vehicles by night. So that will serve the purpose of one single site, multiple use. We will have to work harder. Some C Vs are actually parked on short-term car parks because of other housing development purposes. These car parks will be returned to the government. So it is indeed very difficult for them to look for relevant, well, some parking spaces. For locations close to peers or for vacant sites. Some idle sites, quite a lot of vehicles were left there because of the epidemic. So previously, we have identified areas for vehicles to be parked over there. We will see how we can make improvements. We will work with the relevant departments such as Land's Department to see how we can cater for the needs of the relevant persons. We actually attach great importance to C Vs. They make great contributions to the local economy. Well, on minibus, you will you will have to be brief. On red minibus, it has been longstanding problem. Colleagues of the T D. On green minibus and red minibus, they will conduct a holistic review. Doctor Lo Wei Quo, thank you, Chairman. I will ask about seventy. At that time, I actually asked about the implementation of the Railway Development Strategy two oh one four. It was very much well received. It earned a lot of applause. We were straining at the leash indeed. There was a preliminary roadmap, timetable, etc. All these will have been completed by twenty thirty-one, according to money of the day prices in twenty thirty-one, well, in twenty thirteen. The amount was actually one hundred and ten billion dollars. And we are talking about a very important initiative and target. Up till twenty thirty-one, the total length of railways will exceed three hundred kilometers. In stark contrast to the length of two hundred and seventy kilometers in twenty twenty-one. A very important principle is that we have to dovetail with the development of new development areas and the population intake time. So in twenty twenty-four, it should have been commissioned for Hongshui Q to dovetail with the population intake. But then we are very much anxious and we are very impatient indeed from what we received from the secretary. Tongchung Extension Line was the only one under construction. There was an agreement entered into for other projects. At at best, their planning was completed. And I have to ask the administration about the reason for delay. I'm not expecting a very good reply. The officers should have been held accountable, but but it is very difficult to put it accurately. There is yet another crew of officers. I hope that you will do your level best. This is closely related to the livelihood of citizens. We, the engineering sector, do not want to see this at all. You were dragging your feet. So a lot of the engineers did not have projects to work on, but in the future, they will be sparing themselves too thin. This is a recurring recurring phenomenon that I don't that I do not want to see yet again. Quite a lot of members also asked the administration about the establishment of the Railways Department. I'd like to make this point. I do not want the Railways Department to only oversee and monitor the situation. I hope that the Railways Department will be a gatekeeper for the quality of railways. I hope that it will put in place concrete work. Otherwise, more manpower will be added to different departments because of lack of manpower. I hope that the Railways Department will serve its purpose. Thank you, Chairman.
Doctor Lo has given us a lot of his thoughts, so the secretary can only give a very brief reply. Thank you very much. So two things, there will be four projects commenced this year. One of which is the Tongchung Line Extension that would start in the middle of this year and also the Oyster Bay Station. That is a project not under the original plan that would commence this year as well. Now, for the Northern Link Phase One, the Kutong Station, the construction will also commence this year. For the Railways Department, as I've mentioned before in my previous answers. After all the incidents with railways over the past few years, we want to do a better job in terms of supervising railway projects to prevent any disasters from happening rather than remedian. Thank you. Now, we have Mister Andrew Lam, Perry Yu and Miss Stephen Ho, and then this session will come to a close. We are overrunning a lot. Mister Andrew Lam, thank you. I'm following up on my own question. Two seven uh two seven two and two seven three. Now, the special subsidy for outlying island routes, the rebates would be range would be within the range of five hundred thousand dollars and fi- fifty million dollars. Now, many fare many ferry routes would have to increase the fare a lot. Now, the six hundred thirty million dollar budget, what are you trying to achieve by in terms of compressing the fare increase and maintaining service quality? Now, two seven three, the monitoring and regulation of Kaito. Now, the reply says Kaito is not a common means of transport for the public, so the Transport Department does not have a record concerning the attendance rates and also the lost trip rate for each route. Now, if I if you refer to the Transport Department, there are fifty-six routes, Kaio routes, which are not common routes, but there are sixteen with record of number of trips. But if that's okay, how can you decide whether we whether you would grant renewal of their licenses? Sorry, it should be one four two and one four three. Miss Rosanna Law, Commissioner for Transport. Sorry, I have to look up the question. Sorry, it should be one four one and one four two. I misquoted the number. Now, one for one vessel subsidy scheme and special helping measures, both questions are related to ferry services. So as a consolidated reply, whether it is ferry or Kaio service, it would look at the proposed fare increase very carefully. First, we would look at the cost of operation and also the operational situation. For ferry, we would look at whether the route is an essential surface. If that's the case, we would look at the need of residents living on out island, outlying islands. So we would ensure that the operators can recover the cost of operation and also pose minimum impact on the passengers. Now for Kaitos, I mean for ferries, there are service schedules. However, we don't have that for Kaio. We only rely on complaints from the users. So the situation is unlike other ferry operators with licenses. But we've heard Mister Lam's suggestion. For those Kaio with a service schedule, we will look at how we can ensure the quality of their service. For for some Kaitos, they would only have one departure every hour, so the situation can vary a lot. Just a brief follow-up. Now, we are talking about revitalizing the countryside or rural areas. Well, not just local residents, visitors also need transport, so please monitor the fare increase carefully. Now, you didn't answer me. What are you trying to achieve with the six six hundred thirty million dollars? If there is not sufficient time, please give me a supplementary rep- written reply later. Now, about the special helping measures for vessels. Now, we would look at the operating cost. We all understand that it is exorbitantly expensive to run ferry service in Hong Kong. So our helping measures would be for subsidizing the man the labor cost and also the fuel cost. They would play a key, it would play a key role in maintaining the service of these operators. And also the measures would be for helping the the vessel owners to purchase new vessels. Some of these vessels are very old and they are substandard in terms of carbon emission. So we want to help them to enhance the quality of service as well as buying new vessels, which which would be impossible without a subsidy. Next, Mister Perry Yu. Thank you. My own questions, one zero one. Now, this is something close to my heart, that is the shortage of manpower for the aviation industry. Around the same time last year, in April, the secretary hasn't come into office yet. Back then, the major complaints from the aviation industry was the unreasonable circuits breaking circuits break mechanism. It really jeopardized the operation of many aviation service operators. Now, Hong Kong, the Hong Kong International Airport became a no a virtual no-fly zone because all fly routes are avoiding us, were avoiding us. Now, we have resumed coverage of one hundred and fifty-three surface points. So compared with before, there are still some thirty percent reduction. So it really undermined our ability to connect with the world. So I hope the government can help us restart more flight routes and also give us more manpower. Now, many people are complaining to me that there is a insufficient support staff on the ground. As a result, even when there are pilots or flight crews, they cannot restart the flight routes. It is really a serious problem. Because if that's if this situation persists, then the aviation, the air companies would choose to fly to Shenzhen or Guangzhou. Now, the airport authority has launched different schemes like sharing of manpower scheme and also recruitment exercise. Still, it seems that they fell short of addressing the pressing manpower shortage. So, Secretary, can you publicize the manpower survey at the airports and tell us how many people? How many more people do we need? And also, will there be a concrete plan for importing labor for the aviation industry so that the industry can plan ahead? Secretary, thank you. Mister Yu's questions are very close to your heart as well. On the path to resume normalcy, our connection with the world is of utmost importance. If we cannot resume flight routes to previous level, that would be very bad. This is something that we have to solve, otherwise it would undermine our competitiveness. Now, the A A has con is conducting a manpower survey. It is at the final stage. So now we are working together with the aviation community on possible solutions. By middle of this year, at the latest, we will be able to come up with new solutions to address the manpower shortage. At the very least, we will be able to partly address the problem. So please give us some more time. Before the middle of this year, there will be a plan available. Concerning the level of resumption for patient age by the end of March, we have resumed forty percent of pre-pandemic level for flight numbers, fifty-five percent. So we want to get back to the pre-pandemic level as soon as possible. Thank you. The last member for this session, Mister Stephen Ho. Thank you very much. I would like to follow up on my own question fifty-two to fifty-six. Now, about birthing space at Typhoon shelters, now twenty-five. Now, what is the maximum number of birth paces places at each Typhoon shelter? Now, for some Typhoon shelters, they have already reached maximum capacity. These are the major type of shelters like the Aberdeen type of shelter. For some type of shelter, they have only reached eighteen percent of the utilization rates. Now, every few years, the government would conduct a consulting study to look at the sufficiency of birthing places in Hong Kong. Now every few years, the government would conduct a consulting study to look at the sufficiency of birthing places in Hong Kong. Now for Changzhou, the type of shelters utilization rate is only forty percent. Now I know they are birthing places, but some of them are not desirable birthing places. Say for example, the southern side of the Changzhou Typhoon Shelter, it is very windy and vessels would avoid them. So if you tell us that we still have birthing places. It may not help because some places are simply not desirable, say for example, the Hailing Zhao Typhoon Shelter. But if the report is telling us that there are enough birthing places, the government will simply not. Supply more birthing places. Now twenty six. Well, illegal, not so much, but um. A sh- shoddy practice in typhoon shelters, that is. Getting a reward for renting out government operated typhoon shelter birthing places. Or these illegal activities are operated by some. Criminals, however, you told us that there is no such thing. While a few weeks ago in Changzhou, our oyster, our oyster, some of our oyster farms were. Cut off by criminals and they. Were left adrift on the sea and the marine police told us that they could not help. While these were things done committed by criminals and there is nothing that fishermen could do. Now I remember when Miss Carol Yam was in office, we. Told her that's the design of the birthing place. Was such that the vessel owners cannot. Bought on their own and they required um services run by other, by third parties, so how can you address that? Thank you.
Hey.
I'd like to invite Miss Carol Yun, Director of Marine. Thank you Chairman, thank you Mister Ho's question. First, for the assessment of the. Supply and demand of typhoon shelters. The government has been conducting regular evaluation of the supply and demand of typhoon shelters from a holistic perspective. Last time it was twenty seventeen, recently, last time was twenty twenty one. We commissioned the Hong Kong Polytechnic University to start a new evaluation. Which included the demand of different local vessels, which. Also looked into the size differences of different vessels. There is a time sequence model. To assess the uh well, increase in the number of vessels. On the supply. We will also consider. The supply in the future. In twenty twenty two, for the Typhoon Shelter in Causeway Bay. The area affected was three hectares or so. In twenty thirty, there will be some projects commissioned, for example, invigorating island south. Comparing the supply and demand, we will have a better picture. Last December, we already consulted the relevant committee and the report has been uploaded to the Marine Department's website. Next, whether there will be any vessels being solicited for rewards. In our reply, we said that we would enhance patrol with the police. Apart from joint operation in our regular operation, we will also monitor the situation. We will keep a close eye on the situation for any legal behavior, we will take action. Well, you have to be fast, well, I'm the last one anyway. It is exactly because you did not keep a close watch on the situation. Plus the insufficient space of uh space in the typhoon shelters. The government did not even collect tax, hence the insufficient area in the sea. Miss Carol Yun, Director. We mentioned regular patrol, we did enhance regular patrol. In the event of any illegal behavior, we will initiate prosecution to clamp down on the relevant circumstances. To ensure that the, that the uh vessel are being birthed in an orderly manner for landing facilities. We understand that the trade and fishermen are very much concerned about landing facilities. With the help of Mister Stephen Ho. We have gone to inspect typhoon shelters. For the Typhoon Shelter in Aberdeen. Three landing facilities will be built. The first one is in Aberdeen Typhoon Shelter to the west near Ablay Chow. Construction is underway and is due for completion soon. The next one will also start construction um next year in on Praga, on Praya Road. We are continuing with our dialogue with the trade to see whether there will be any landing facility. The session in the morning. Is brought to a close now and the afternoon session will start at two in the afternoon, thank you.